I'll make a motion to reconvene and open session at 7:00. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of the November 20, 2019 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
I will say that the school committee met in a closed session, and at that session, we approved the engagement of an outside investigator regarding Title IX. We also approved overtime for a non-union employee, and we approved the superintendent's recommendation as modified by the school committee regarding a matter involving a teacher. Would you please stand and join me in all the silence and give the pledge, please?
United States of America, and to the people who stand here, one nation, one God, and the visible, the living, the just, the strong.
I believe we have a presentation from Globe Park tonight. Hello.
So I know it's only November, but I'm really excited, and I wanted to share with you everything that Globe-
Excuse me, Tina, would you speak into the microphone? I'll lift them up up. Here we go.
Is that better?
Again.
How about that?
Yeah.
I do.
Perfect.
Awesome. So I know it's only November, but we've done a lot of amazing things at Globe this year already, and it's going to be a fabulous year. So I thought I would share with you some of the things that we've already accomplished. So our school year started over the summer. The Rotary Club, which is an amazing group of people, came to Globe. If you know, they redid Coleman's library. So they came to Globe, and my library is probably three times the size of Coleman's, and they took it on. They brought in the challenge. I mean, my library was five different colors. It was purple and orange, and it was just disgusting. So Rotary came in, and they pulled out my orange rug, they gave me new flooring, they had partnered with Lowe's, they built me new bookshelves, painted my walls. I have two beautiful blue and antique white walls now. They did my trim, helped me organize my library. Even just two weeks ago, Rotary came in and stained all of the bookshelves, because they were like a natural pine color, so they came in and stained it blue. They have dedicated a huge amount of time to this project and have given up many Saturdays.
That's, by the way, that's Councilman, Council Vice President John Brunson that enlisted for this project.
We enlisted many husbands.
No.
I left my husband out of it, but he was there. So, and the Rotary Club also bought me new tables and chairs for my library, because someone painted them, my old ones, so it's coming along. Now I've just got to have my bookshelves mounted to the walls. We've been slowly reading out the old books and just keeping all of our newer and more updated books. But it's already looking amazing. I have a media center, I have a sensory section for my self-contained classrooms, and I have a reading nook area for my regular kids. It's just, it's open now, it's clean, it's absolutely beautiful. So that's where we started. On top of that, over the summer, I had many staff members who came in and did a great deal of work. This is Mrs. Linoy, my art teacher. She did two murals in my school. So she did this one, which says, "Do the Right Thing Even When No One Is Looking," and she painted this one on another wall that says, "You Are Kind, You Are Brave, You Are Strong." As well as Christine Parker and myself, we went into the girls' bathroom and the boys' bathroom. We painted all of the stalls black. This way, they can't write on the stalls, you can't see it. And I purchased decals and have positive messages throughout, and have positive messages throughout all of my bathrooms now as well. On top of that, my speech teachers, my occupational therapist, my physical therapist, and my special ed teachers came together, and we created a sensory hallways for my kids. We also created a sensory wall that says, "Keep Calm and Learn On." On top of that, we took last year's RICAS scores. Over the summer, my teachers, grades three, four, and five, met, and we went through all of our RICAS scores, and we realized that we had a very large number of partially means expectations students. And when we broke that down into even deeper information, we realized that majority of those partially means students have scored between 490s, like 490s, 495s, and they need 500 to get into means expectations. So we went through the RICAS standards, and we took our curriculum that we're currently teaching right here in our ready gen, and we looked for holes and gaps that RICAS tests, but we're not teaching due to the fact that, I mean, our curriculum only teaches so much. So we took an assessment, and we took our curriculum, and we married them together. We're hoping that this will be enough to push our high 400s into being means expectations for next year's RICAS scores. On top of that, K1 and 2 also met, and we did a great deal of backwards of design, backwards by design, which means that we looked at our assessments, and we determined if we're assessing something, are we teaching the assessment? So sometimes, like Ready Gen, uh, not Ready Gen, sorry, here we go, will have you look at a problem in one way, but then will slightly change the assessment. So it kind of tricks kids up a little. So what my K1 and 2 teachers did is they created guides for students to help supplement their curriculum, so that they were now actually learning multiple ways of answering a single problem. And then on top of that, my special ed teachers were looking at the DLM, and, which is the Alternative Assessment, and the RICAS, because they have both testing, state testing within their classrooms, and they also looked at the standards, and what does that mean, and what are we not hitting, what marks are we missing, and they're implementing it into So another initiative that Globe has is increasing our attendance, and I'm excited to say that we found, had hooked us up with the RIC tool for attendance, and it actually measures our chronic absenteeism and compares it to what we were doing last year and how we were doing. And I'm very happy to say that we've already improved our chronic absenteeism by 12% according to RIC. And we're doing this by monitoring our attendance, having the attendance score for early childhood is big. For our elementary school this year is actually huge, and I have noticed a difference there. As well as having a celebration of students who come in every day. So every month, we have a perfect attendance celebration at our school. And what that entails is that a student has to be in school every day. If they miss a day, they can only be excused if there's a doctor's note. They cannot be dismissed, they cannot be tardy. And we've had two already. So we have a field day, and we've had a game day. And I have to say that I also have to thank the Korean Tech Center, because Ms. Christine ships in her Korean Tech Center students once a month to Globe, and they actually break my students down and play games with them. And the kids, both the high school and my elementary students absolutely love it. And I will say that out of my 509 students, I have a minimum of 280 every single month that participate in perfect attendance. We're also working on improving family engagement. That's a good one for me this year. I have to say that in the last three years, my PTA was failing. I wasn't getting a lot of parents involved in, so I decided to up my parent communication in hopes of gaining more parents in. And I now have 13 parents as part of my PTA. I know it's still small, but I'm working on it, so I went from none to 13, so that's progress. And we started the year off with a school dance. I had over 380 families participate in my school dance, and I have to thank Nancy Cuzero for allowing four of her National Honor Society students to come to my school dance to help run it. I also have what we call Haunt of Hallways. So we're trying to do a family involvement every month as well. So September was our dance, "We're in Haunt of Hallways." So instead of doing trunk or treat, we actually opened the school, and we had the kids go around the school, and families set up stations and give out candy. I had over 400 students alone participate in Haunt of Hallways. And then next month, we're doing Happy Holiday Fun, I think that's what we're called it, but we're making, families are coming in, and they're making Christmas ornaments for their children. Or holiday ornaments, I want to be correct. And finally, for one more engagement, is that we participate in Girls of the Run, and every year, we max out with 15 to 20 girls, and every girl has participated. That's Globe. Thank you very much.
It's great to see that Globe is addressing a lot of the issues that are challenged, that challenge our district with attendance and parent involvement and making school fun for everyone. So congratulations, Tina. Keep up the work.
Excellent. Very good.
Is there anyone who would like to address the school committee? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, School Committee. My name is Emily Henry. I am in charge of Public Relations for the National Honor Society.
My name is Lena Invisitoff, and I'm also a Public Relations Honor Officer for the National Honor Society.
We are here before you today to request the pleasure of your company as the National Honor Society of your class during induction ceremony. Held at Wensacan High School Auditorium, January 23, 2020, at 6:30 PM.
The National Honor Society will be inducting students from sophomore, junior, and senior classes, recognizing their academic excellence, leadership qualities, outstanding character, and selfless service done for the community. We hope to see you attend this induction ceremony and share this memorable experience with us, with the students and teachers for a job well done.
We thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Good job. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee? Seeing none, hearing none, well, let's go to recognitions and announcements. Back to you, Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to recognize Mrs. Silla, and she, as we all saw a few minutes ago, she and her staff and her students and her parents are doing some tremendous things at Globe Park, and we're very proud of the work that they're doing. It seems very impressive, so thank you very much, Tina. Commissioner, Angelica Inflante will be visiting the Wensacan Education Department tomorrow. She will first meet with the administrative team at the McKey Administration Building, discuss a variety of topics such as school classifications, the work that's going on across the district, and the curriculum work that is going on currently, and that has been going on over the past five years. The plans are to address also the RICAS proficiency. We're going to have that conversation with the commissioner, and at the end of the meeting, which is going to last about an hour, we're going to be heading to Paris Elementary School for a visit there. Congratulations to the Wensacan High School, Wensacan Area Career and Technical School. Technical Center, debate team, completed their first tournament of the season recently. Wensacan sent four novice teams and two varsity teams, and all debaters performed very well. Wensacan's varsity team of Hillary Pilibon and Parker Penn advanced to the varsity finals round, coming in second in the team competition. Varsity debaters Azariah Rivera and Mara Chantabon came in first and second for speaker points in the competition. In the novice division, Wensacan had two of three teams that went undefeated for the day. Place had to be determined by average speaker points. The novice team, made up of Nick Tremblay and Eric Chen, came in second by half a point, while a team of Charlotte Lewis and Jacob Orlando came in third. Congratulations to all debaters. Also, congratulations to Mr. Sanini, who is the debate team coach. Phil does a wonderful job with our debaters every year. On Saturday, December 7th, 2:00 to 7:00 PM, Wensacan Main Street Holiday School Committee will host their 11th Annual Holiday School. Our school district will be participating in their tree decorating contest once again. Each participating school will be provided a free tree, which will be set up in an embalmed municipal parking lot located on Main Street. Students will provide handmade decorations that they will donate for their school's tree. A group of judges will choose the best tree, and the winner will receive a trophy to proudly display at their school. In addition to the tree decorating contest, attendees will enjoy shopping along Main Street, music performers, retail vendors, food trucks, scavenger hunt at local businesses, interactive family-friendly activities for kids, a fire performance, and yes, a visit from Santa Claus, which was wonderful. Lastly, the Air Force Junior ROTC instructors and cadets of Wensacan High School have earned an overall unit assessment score exceeds standards, which is the highest rated team during their evaluation on October 21st, 2019. Major Daniel Richards and Master Sergeant Laurie Smith, Wensacan High School instructors, have created a dynamic and supportive learning environment, coupled with an excellent community outreach. The instructors provided outstanding leadership in the administrative cadet-centered citizen program. The Wensacan High School cadets performed exceptionally well and took great pride in meeting and accomplishing their unit goals. The Wensacan High School Air Force Junior ROTC citizenship program is making a positive impact on the cadets, the school, and the community. This all came from Stephen Sanders, who was a colonel from the United States Air Force. We are very proud of our Wensacan High School cadets and their instructors for their professionalism and dedication to excellence. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. McGee, would you care to comment on the recent lockdown?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Yes, I was going to move that to my report, but I will certainly comment on it. So we had a situation recently at Wensacan High School in which four students were making prank calls to different businesses in the community. One of those calls, unfortunately, was to the main office at Wensacan High School. When the call came through to the secretary, the voice on the other end said that the school was shot up at noon time. Call came in at approximately 11:05 AM. Upon receiving the call, the secretary of the main office did a very good job of immediately notifying the administration, the resource officer, were immediately notified of the Wensacan police, notified myself, as well as Mr. Matariani. By the time Mr. Matariani and I got to the high school, which is even 10 minutes, the police were already there. Mr. Boulay was there also, indeed, with the Wensacan police to protect us. Chief Oates arrived shortly afterwards, made a decision to put the school in lockdown because we were unsure of where this threat was coming from. So the school went into lockdown at approximately 11:30 or so. The school was in lockdown for approximately two hours, and I've got to say, the Wensacan police, along with the school administration, did a tremendous job of locating where that cell phone came from, where that call came from. It was really impressive, the police were able to establish the pain from the cell phone to the cell tower, which indicated that the call came from Wensacan High School. And the police then reached out to the phone provider at the cell, from the cell phone, and established a name. Mr. Boulay and his administrative team went onto the Skyward Student Information System, located the name of the student, went to the room the student was, and brought the student to the main office to question. So they really, and then they did all of this within probably 40 minutes or so. One student led to another, led to another, led to another. So I've got to commend the Wensacan Police Department and the Wensacan High School administration. I also want to commend the staff, teachers and staff, and students, who did a tremendous job. This was, you know, this was the real thing, and thank God it wasn't the real thing. The students involved were not found to be in possession of any weapons. There were no weapons that were located at the school, and so that's where it was fortunate. But I've got to commend the staff and the students on really taking this seriously, and they really stepped up, they did a great job, because after 10 or 15 minutes, which is usually the length of a lockdown, practice lockdown, when you go into 20 minutes and a half an hour, something is usually happening, and they did a great job. And I want to, you know, commend also our parents, who were very concerned, obviously many parents came to the school. The school sent out a school messenger message during the course of the lockdown, notifying parents that it was in a lockdown. And then shortly after the lockdown lifted, I sent out a school messenger message to the parents, to the community, to notify them of what happened. And so it was a very unfortunate incident. We never have to go through one of these again, but again, I want to commend those that were involved, really doing a tremendous job to keep our kids and our staff safe at Wensacan High School. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any command member have any comments, questions, Dr. McGee? I will make a motion, you see, we placed on file, recognition and some announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll approve the minutes, make a motion to approve the October 30, 2019 open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections, additions, amendments? Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any school committee member that would like to take any of the items in the consent agenda out of order, or is there any questions about the consent agenda? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Dr. McGee, we'll go right back in.
Mr. Chairman, I have two handouts for each round committee that I'm going to pass So I'm going to talk to the school committee and the community about our RICAS school classifications. So as the committee is aware, the RICAS scores were recently released to the public. The school classifications were also recently released to the public. So the school classifications, when I speak of the school classifications, I'm talking about how schools are rated.
Yes.
They're rated a star rating, of which many indicators are taken into account when a school is classified. So I'll take you back quickly to last year. Last year, we had one school, Beale Savoy Elementary, that was rated a three-star school. We had Wensacan High School, Illinoisville Middle School, and Hamlet Middle School, as well as, I'm sorry, Hamlet Middle School, as well as Kevin Coleman and Citizens in 1718 that were rated two-star schools. We had in 1718, Vernon Heights, in Harris was a one-star school, in Oak was a one-star school, Globe Park was a two-star school as well in 1718. As the committee knows, Harris Elementary was based on their classification, based on the fact that Harris, due to their proficiency and growth, were found to be in the lower 5% of the state with respect to elementary schools. As a result, they were considered a comprehensive support and proven school. I'm happy to say that with the RICAS scores coming out, the classification coming out, Harris is no longer a comprehensive school. Harris, for last year, made sufficient growth, and sufficient growth in their proficiency, so that they're not a classified as a comprehensive school. So, you know, that's a testament to Mr. McKinnon and his leadership and his staff, who I know worked very hard last year, and their students as well, and their parents, because this is really a team effort when it comes to increasing proficiency and raising, you know, growth across the school. So that was, that's where we were last year. This year, Harris is now a two-star school, so they have gone from one to a two-star school. Beale Savoy is still maintained a three-star school classification rating. Wensacan High School, Illinoisville Middle School, Hamlet Middle School, and Citizens Memorial, as well as Globe Park, are two-star schools. We have Vernon Heights, Coleman, and Oak Year are one-star schools. Vernon Heights and Coleman, unfortunately, again, mainly due to not a sufficient amount percentage of student growth in ELA and AF, and not enough growth in proficiency are classified as comprehensive support and proven schools. So I met with- So, I met with Mrs. Ortiz and part of her faculty to explain the process of me going out to meet with them again, with her entire staff. This week, we also went out, myself and Dr. Bolt and Mr. Reesaw, met with Mr. DeRogier and his Vernon Heights staff to explain to them, to let them know of the classification, to explain to them what that process is going to look like. That process will be exactly like Harris went through. It really is continuing to go through because Harris has put together action plans and steps to address their classification. And even though they're out of comprehensive status, they're still going to be following through on their plan. I know that speaking with Mr. McKinnon, you know, the hope is that this year's RITAS assessment, having had one full year of implementation of a lot of different strategies and different types of programs, will be creating some scores more. But, you know, right now I'm going to focus on Vernon Heights and Coleman. So, they will be creating Community Advisory Board Cab, which is the first step in the process that typically happens in spring. Last year, the date was March. So, both schools will be working, both schools will be meeting with the Department of Education to begin that process. Once the cab is created, then that group can begin to work. Staff members will put together a needs assessment and a root cause assessment as well. And then from that, from those two, the plan, the group plan, we will together. And that's something that is submitted to RITAS typically at the school year. In addition to submitting that information to RITAS, as Mr. McKinnon and Harris received for this year, there are grants that are awarded to schools that are comprehensive schools. So, I want to say that Harris received about $45,000 to work with. So, similarly, Vernon, Coleman will receive, maybe not the same amount of money, but they will deserve a certain amount of money to start working towards their statewide improvement. So, those are the star ratings across the district. I handed out to each of you and I spoke about this briefing a couple meetings ago when the RITAS scores first came out. But this just gives you a chart. If you go to the first one that has Wensocket at the top, that shows our district in its entirety. And the top four bars are ELA literacy at the bottom. That bottom rectangle is mathematics. So, if you go to literacy at the top in Team 19, that's last year's assessment. Proficiency is combining meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. So, if you look at Team 19, we had 13, 14% across the district who raised 33 were proficient in English Language Arts and as compared to two years ago, 12%. So, we saw a very modest increase of two percentage points from 1718 to 1819 in ELA literacy. The state in 1819, 38% of students across the state were proficient. And in 1718, 33%. So, the state saw a 5% increase over two years while the Wensocket Education Department saw a 2% increase. You go down to math, 1819, 12% from Wensocket were proficient, 1718, 11%. So, we saw a 1% increase over two years. And the state, from 1718, where it was 27% proficient to 30% proficient last year, it saw a 3% increase. And that's the entire district. That's not breaking down the proficiency into subcategories. The second sheet that I have for you breaks that down into three subsections. And so, if you look at the top, to the left, we have District Math. And then to the right, we have District English Language Arts. So, if you start at the top, differentlyated students, those are students with IUDs. And what this shows you is, it tells you the percentage from 1718 that's compared to 1819 of students who are not needing, students who are partially needing, and students who are needing or exceeding. And that is broken down again comparing 1718 to 1819. The goal, and Tina was speaking about this briefly during the presentation, when she talked about looking at students that, looking at students cut scores. So, if you have a large portion of your students that are partially needing, let's say we're talking about fifth grade. So, we might have a lot of students who scored, whose cut score was between 490 and say 495. That's very close to the 500, which would make down in the fifth grade proficiency. So, one of the things that, as Tina stated, she started to do and that the rest of our principals are going to start working on, is looking at, among other things, looking at those cut scores to try to move those kids who are on the cusp. Because it can just be a matter of, you know, 10 students or so, that if you move those students from partially needing proficiency to being proficient, that could mean the difference between, you know, a few percentage points potentially. So, that's one of the things that we're doing. So, again, this graph shows you where are students who are differentlyated, who have IUDs, economically disadvantaged, other students who are free and reduced lunch. And then at the bottom, we have our English Language Arts. So, it just gives you a sense of what those percentages are in each of those three categories from year to year.
May I ask, total number of, this is, looks like 3 to 8?
Yes.
Is this 3 to 8?
Yes.
Okay. How many, what is the total population of the kids of our students taking the test? And then what's the population of the IUD students, the economically disadvantaged, and ELOs?
So, I don't have a specific number for you right now. I can get that for you.
I think, because it would be very interesting to say that if you took out these three subsets out of the calculation, how would it look like? Because the suburban schools, the rural schools, don't have these issues. It would be nice for this committee to see what is the impact, take away the impact of these three categories, and where does the rest of our schoolchildren fall in? I would like to see that because we know that it's only the five or six major districts, urban districts, that have a preponderance of these three categories, whereas others do not. So, I would like to know these kinds of numbers and where would we be? And what would our scores be? I'll bet you it will significantly increase the results of our test. Not that we're ever going to dismiss the makeup of Wensocket, but it would be nice to understand what the breakdown is of all kids in the population.
We try to pull back that out. And one of the things that I know Mrs. Viskus has been a staunch advocate of, meeting with the state and meeting with former commissioners about a gap test, a gap assessment for students because what we have is you have students who are on alternate assessment, they take ELOs in assessment, and then you have students that take the RITAS. And we have students that are somewhere in between both of those assessments. And yes, it's a big issue for districts like Wensocket to have a large percentage of students that fall within those two assessments.
I'd like to, it'd be nice to say, well, here it is, without that, and then we superimpose all our children in all our categories, but this is what we've got.
If I may?
Viskus, Viskus.
I get very nervous when we talk about segregating those numbers out and come down with different results because those aren't the reality. And that's, segregation is what it sounds like to me. It kind of frightens me. We talk about pulling those three subgroups out to find out, we talk about this for our evaluation rates. And it's concerning to me to think that way. I think probably a better example, and a more relevant example in terms of trying to make an argument to the state of, you know, pull out the children that we think that might be successful on a gap test that aren't being offered a gap test. There are being forced to take the NECAP test that's inappropriate in that case.
RITAS.
That is not appropriate for them. It's not an appropriate assessment for them. And if we could pull those students out and say we gave them an appropriate assessment, these numbers would change. But we don't have that test and we haven't had that test for three commissioners, we're on the third commissioner now, that just doesn't seem to think there's a need for that test for those great students. I don't have a problem with that, but I have a problem with coming up with numbers that take these three subgroups out because they're creating a false impression in people's minds that these three subgroups are creating the problem and that's not fair. That's what I think.
I look at it a little differently because folks have made public comments regarding the overall results of Wensocket's RITAS test. And they compare it to communities that don't have any of these subgroups. And they compare as well, like the 80% versus your 14 or whatever we have. And I'd like to know, this is Wensocket, I agree, but I mean to me it would be interesting to know to know what the other, the other numbers would be. Because our population is what it is. And you're right, we should have an appropriate assessment for some of our students. I agree with that. And you're right, I think the numbers need improvement. But when you, when folks are looking at our city and saying, well, you can't even reach 15% in terms of testing, I got a big issue with that because they cannot really explain it and they're pointing a finger that you folks better do a better job. They don't understand the makeup of our district. That's my point. It's not a segregation issue. It's a matter of a comparison that is totally unfair.
But my question is to what end? I mean, we all know our demographics are different than some other, more suburban communities. But to what end? What do we prove by segregating those numbers out? I don't think we prove anything other than if you want to, you know, stand toe-to-toe with Barrington and say, well, listen, if we didn't have ELLs students and we didn't have the economically disadvantaged and it's in on that same background, it doesn't. I'm sure it does. But not to the volume that we do. I just think you're creating a false impression again of blaming the demographics. And I know demographics are all part of it, but we can't blame not one demographics. At some point in time, we have to turn it around.
I agree. But when I look at this chart, I look at the percentages that are not needed, right?
Yes.
On all three, I'm looking at it and saying, well, that's your, you're bringing the scale down. What's the scale absentism?
Then let's break it down further. How are there students that are chronically absent scoring? There are other factors that impact RITAS results. And I don't know, these, calling these, in particular, special ed, does it, does it, differentlyated students and ELOs out is diskeyed, faulty? But that's fine. I respect your opinion.
I respect your school.
That's fine.
We're going to disagree on this.
We do.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
I just want to applaud Mr. Silver and her staff, and I'm sure all the principals of the elementary schools, that are really doing a good examination of the test results, in particular seeing where the students get a little improvement. Because you talk about a score of 498 and we need to get to 500. That could be, that could be an issue of a few questions. And if you get half of them, they need work stronger in vocabulary, they may lose the written composition, or they may lose some sort of vocabulary study. That could easily push them to the next level. So, I applaud that study and I do know that the district will really, you know, work on something like that because obviously that's the way to go. This is mainly about curriculum and only offer batches. But the students need, in particular where they are a little more proven, so I applaud the work you're doing with this grade. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did you have a question, Viskus? A comment?
It's Capwell.
Oh, sorry. This Capwell. I'm in the booth. There we go.
Thanks, Chairman. And I'm not trying to play mediator here, but sitting at this edge and listening, it almost sounds like you're actually agreeing that you'd like to see the information broken down separately. Although, I can understand what Mrs. Viskus is saying. Because I know you have mentioned before, Chairman Porche, if we were to take the chronic absenteeism, how do we, how do we just dice the pie a little bit differently so that way, we've talked about it before, what are the root causes of some of these? And it sounds like there is actually an attempt to get deeper into the root cause piece of it. And I don't want to speak for you, but I felt like that might have been where you were involved with your chairman before, Capwell. As I was listening to both of you talk, I felt like there was some overlap in the conversation about, in the line of just being so.
Well, listening to Ms. Silver, Ms. Silver, not Mrs. Viskus, right? I look at what you're doing and it's going the right way. You know, everything you're doing, and I'm sure the other schools are doing or are doing all these good things. And to me, these numbers are going to improve since we've got the graphs. And I look at them, I'd like, because we hear it. We heard it the other day at the symposium when looking at our numbers. And we're just glomming a low number without really looking at what's causing it, what Mrs. Viskus said. Absenteeism and other issues will have an impact, but it would be nice to peel the onion and see the way we are because it uses a basis. That's all. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the subcommittee reports and we'll stop with technology. I'll turn it over to Ms. Capwell and Vice Chair Burke.
Perfect, Mr. Chairman. So, on Tuesday, November 12th, 6:00 p.m., the Technology Subcommittee met at the MCDI Administration Building. In attendance were myself, Vice Chair Burke, Alex MacRae, Brad Perrier, Bill Webb, Kayla Montanaro, and Jeff Barrow. Also present were Heather Neal and Jessica Donato, our district blended and personalized learning coaches, who kicked us off with our first agenda topic, which was an insightful overview of the district's instructional technology program. Their presentation for the purpose of this meeting was narrowed down to the use of technology in our elementary schools. We were educated on the existing hardware available in the classrooms as well as the go-forward recommended hardware needs to continue to promote the blended and personalized learning model. To better help us understand how our students are interacting with the devices, Heather and Jess presented real-life scenarios of work product of our elementary school children, and it was all quite impressive. The key here is that we were being shown product, meaning that the curriculum is specifically steering clear use of technology in classroom for consumption purposes, but strategically focused on the production and creation aspect. So, once we moved through that presentation piece, we then moved our focus to decisions that are going to be made, but it's somewhat in the future, it's not right now, by the school committee with respect to the actual devices used in the classrooms. Our current fleet of Chromebook devices are coming up on their end of life. And this might prompt some of you to ask like, why or what does that mean? In general, Google only offers or guarantees updates for a five-year lifetime span. And so, and that's after a product is originally released. So, it's important to know that when we stopped purchasing their devices, it was not done so at the time of the product release. And even though they were new, not used, we were already a couple of years into their release. This was done purposely. It wasn't unbeknownst to us. It was done because we were able to outfit our new schools with a reduced cost. So, going back to the fact that we're going to have So going back to the fact that we're going to have to make a decision because we're coming up on the end of life, it doesn't mean that the devices are just not going to work any longer, it's that they're not going to get quite the resources and support from Google that that ultimately needs. So since Google will stop supporting our devices, we'll need to review and review on next steps to buy our new equipment, and that discussion, again, can be taken in the meantime, because we don't need to make a decision until spring of 2020. And so Brad and Al are going to come back to us with the options, estimates, pros and cons, and we should provide any recent order to make that decision. So then, we also talked about, as we're, the existing assets will land on desired disposition. So for the city bylaws, we should, it should be going to improve funds for the devices being to option them off. We also talked about exploring any interest in retaining the devices and using them by students who need the devices to develop for the Microsoft Office, but not necessarily fully open to the risk that that has got now. We moved on to speak about the current configuration of some of our server closets within the district. There's an effort underway to address some minor needs to ensure the servers are being housed in an appropriate environment, considering some of the basic items, as well as ensuring adequate ventilation. And then Al presented to the group a number of possible projects that are being considered and tied into the build-out of our school's internet fiber, which, for those that don't know, we have a fiber optic ring that was implemented thanks to a ring from the federal government, a Kennedy ring program. So now the team is thinking, how do we take this really valuable resource and make a great use of it? So given that we've got this incredible support structure, Al and his team are looking to, again, make most of it by accessing it to tie in for additional security cameras, streamlining card access rights to buildings on a per-person basis, undertaking the effort to digitize scores and student assessment plans that today are housed at the CBI and actually require like logistics and people to physically go to the CBI, access them, it'll create a lot of logistics, free up a lot of time and energy physically to treat those documents. We then ended with recognition that we'd like to meet monthly for the next three quarters, and then might move to a five-month cadence. We did land on a next meeting date and time, however, I may need to change that, and I'm going to follow up with you guys as soon as I get word whether or not we have a conflict. So at that point, we'll announce it.
Questions? Very good presentation. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a technology subcommittee report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll have a discussion on the Burnin' Design Team Pathways update.
Capwell. Don't worry, I think it is a honor to be called Mrs. Pappiscus.
I don't know, maybe my special religion has moved me up.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Chairman.
No!
Thank you, Chairman.
Go ahead, go back on.
Okay, so at the committee's last meeting, I braced up the background around this topic a bit, which is ongoing work at Burnin' Elementary School to create a pilot that's focused on limited and personalized learning. So this work is being done in conjunction with the Highland Meter Institute, staff members, administrators, and committee members. And I'll just go on and give the ongoing updates when we have this meeting. So currently, we're moving through our planning and design phase with our next meeting to occur on 12/10. In order to make the best end product, it's going to take, you know, more than just a group of individuals sitting in a room sounding office, what they think is the best change for our school. So it definitely is a journey for us. So this journey is included so far, getting to know each other, crafting a shared mission, and then how we're going to interact to achieve our shared goals. We then moved on to student shadows, and later did some digging into our experiences with ourselves, the teachers, and parents, so that way we can move into the visioning process. So on 11/12, there was a meeting, so I was totally present, or absent, I should say, so I should note that. But there was plenty of work to be given, so I was able to catch up on what had happened. They did make significant advancements in getting through what is the visioning process. So now that they've gotten enough, we've gotten enough under our belts, we can start saying, what is the vision going to be? What do we all agree upon for Burnin's output or outcome for this? And that essentially is going to then dovetail into some purposeful development of our priority practices, and then it's going to move very quickly into the pilot phase. We've got our next meeting on 12/10. And I'll provide another update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any comments? Questions? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Burnin' Design Team Pathways update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the curriculum subcommittee. Mrs. Pappiscus.
I bet this way. Good afternoon, subcommittee men and members, November 6th. We discussed a variety of topics. First, we discussed ready gen, review of ready gen, led by Senator Vizso. Who reminded us that in year one, there were some problems around work role affecting implementation with fidelity, as question was asked, it's simply not even been done. However, that is now moving forward. I would admit, and I think so would Mr. Gorgé, that a lot of the discussion was educationally based over my head, because I'm a lawyer, not a teacher. But as best we could, I gathered from what we've been gathering. It focuses on small group construction. Instructors are pushing into the classroom, leaders are pushing into the classrooms to help the ID, professional development. Teachers in the district who are skilled in the curriculum are developing slides in global classrooms to help support the learning need of the ready gen. The district is having a recurring conversation with all the elementary schools, with the term medical was the next in last school. And there's a new focus on ELL writing, as this is a ride-cast book, it's a focus on setting, is a focus on setting text with meaningful understanding, but one large issue is why is a parent unhelpful to provide exemplars so you can see what writing means or exceeds the standard, what a writing that means or exceeds the standard looks like. We have a lot of good things going on, we have a lot of learning to be privileged to apply ready gen. The ready gen may analyze some problems to all subjects, not just non-professional curriculum. We are also looking to learn from successful districts by meeting with them to see what their success has been and maybe what we're doing differently needs to do. We use these slide decks, which are like powerpoints, we're told, to teach students vocabulary and reading, and to know multi-level reading. It's also visual and helpful to all groups. We wanted to develop something similar for writing. We also received an update on district curriculum conversations that's been close to my head for Senator Vizso. Jessica Heather, Dr. Doo, revolved on speaking in elementary schools, with the back home having lost one schedule. Content provides the feedback writing, there are challenges with the right curriculum and parts you last year's work to full situation. And no superior work being done to learn the new curriculum because of little to no professional development. The focus remains on small group structure, problems, slide decks, feedback with social studies teachers in middle school, I achieved 3,000, it's a good conversations. The focus must against skills, not just content, meaning that they want to teach the students the way, how to address a ride-cast question presented, not just focus on content, to be able to read the question and figure out the answer is spot, as opposed to simply regurgitating the mindset. We must align presentations to contribute to the skills needed for success on the ride-cast. Reading specials to make the social studies teachers to help make sure the instruction is presented in different change levels. The problem with ride-casts is that all students are reading the same text, no matter what their level is, and so they need to teach readers who read at different levels how to grapple with grade level content, even if they do not read a grade level. For example, these things like context, cues, et cetera. Achieve 3,000 is designed to provide universal literacy for all those who are on different levels, like scaffolding skills. We need to close the gap, the kids need to buy in and take the management group or partnership in, including the skills. We must measure those skills to close the gap. Content does not always, does not suffer unachieved, we need to continue to stay the course. And that's been a theme through our overall curriculum subcommittees, that we need to stay the course on curriculum, perhaps tweak it, adjust it, but not keep jumping from one curriculum to another. The SOTC education probably developed trends based on these curriculum conversations, put it all together so that we can gather information and address the issues, so we can see what problems we can solve, whereas we need to keep the communication alive between the teachers on the front line and district leadership. With that community leadership, we need to meet with the schools. We discussed Studies Thinking 3,000, again, led by Senator Vizso, focuses on social studies in middle school. English teachers slash curriculum author, the place of collection of data, does not usually align to the SOTC program. Studies Thinking deals with fiction tasks, achieve deals with non-fiction tasks. Use strategy skills and concepts to scaffold structure, weight level materials so that all is aligned to the SOTC program. Studies Thinking coaches are pushing into the classrooms to enable teacher instruction development. Both Studies Thinking and 3,000 are adaptive programs. There's one annual assessment, and the programs can adapt depending on that assessment, setting monthly updates to students and classrooms. It's teacher-driven and dependent. Then we talked about an overall ride-cast result, as I mentioned earlier. The only fair comparison to students in districts who are similar, who use similar curriculum to us, is, the only way to do a fair comparison is to compare students in districts who are similar and use similar curriculum to us and changes of that project. It's the first time we've looked at scores versus curriculum in this way. We need, Chairman Gorgé mentioned, that we need to focus to align the curriculum to what's on the ride-cast, and Senator Vizso, we can do that, but within our curriculum. But we need to make sure that we're teaching kids what they need to notice and see on the ride-cast. For example, often times, subjects come up in the ride-cast and protest that our in curriculum, but are not yet taught at the time of testing. We've tweaked our curriculum to meet those requirements. So that if we can teach the curriculum, we need kids ready to be tested, not we will teach them the test. We need to practice testing skills so students learn how to take a test, write your problem down, figure out how you answer questions. And if you can finally have a consistent curriculum, these things take time. We need to evaluate what we are doing well, what we need to improve. Ride distance to do this, maybe we need to take our page out of other districts and focus on one period per league to head-on target ride-cast issues. We need to focus on the secondary level, the middle school and the high school, get the elementary school done all the next. The next curriculum subcommittee meeting is scheduled for January 15, 2020 at 1:00 p.m. Hopefully, the Wunsoket High School, Hamlet, and Route 124.
How did you remember all that?
I don't know.
Great job.
Can't see I understood what I learned.
Anyone have any comments, questions? So Mrs. Pappiscus. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the curriculum subcommittee report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll turn it over to you again, Mrs. Pappiscus, for CLAC.
The CLAC met in November 14th, a different time than leadership meeting, you know, the meeting on November 7th of the leadership team. CLAC was at the SHON meeting, the Special Education Advisory, and were early addressed with this information, our first opportunity to meet with us. Our meeting on the 14th commenced with all present interviews with themselves as to what we asked and brought up to the meeting. Under all business, we discussed our parents' courtroom, and meetings are scheduled through January. There's a payroom, my events, mostly the, as Blackside, data reports, and coupling. On December 17th, I was informed that we're having a public, at my house, RSVP to the Wunsoket CLAC email by December 14th, if you're attending, what you're bringing, please. January 15th would be the next meeting, after that, we'll do the ZENIs on that, over at Wunsoket. We discussed an update to the National Arts Society, and participation regarding district students. Dr. Sullivan advised that counseling and initial revisions to the bylaws, we're still working back and forth on some of these issues, and it has not ever been brought before the school committee. Communication with families regarding special education resources training workshops, Dr. Sullivan, Ms. Morell are trying to set up workshops, others have gone out to parents to advise who is working with students, with staff. Who in staff is working to live in the children's students so that all our special education parents know who to reach out to with regard to issues around services or social work, whatever the case may be. Under new business, we discussed the personal care assistant hiring policy for after-school events. Positions were posted, but there was very little response. We're looking to provide position, is guarantees and they have the consistent schedule, even if they're not with one or two of our students, staff, and the SOTC students. And to explain that one more point, apparently was discussed at the meeting that I was absent for in October, and essentially what we're talking about is after-school events, like CCF events, that students who have PCAs are wanting ones in the classroom, we have to leave these events as well, and we're trying to determine staffing to accompany students to these events. And essentially, the problem is that the staff that would be applying want to make sure that they're going to be guaranteed as to their schedule, it's not going to depend on, okay, the child's going to go to the event Monday, the next week they're not going to go, they do not Monday. They want to make sure they're going to have consistent scheduling, like they're scheduled to work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, every week, even though, like, a student A, one week, student B, another week, student C, another week. But that's what we're looking at now. Child outreach program procedures, there's a post-IUP survey, it will be done on three weeks, you will contact information for Dr. Sullivan and Ms. Morell. The survey will go out, even sealed at will, so that those present will not have an opportunity to review it. From what I understand, it's a very short survey, perhaps three questions, and again, parents will be asked to include it, put it into an envelope, seal it, and hand it back to the ELLA and upload directly to Dr. Sullivan and Ms. Morell, and they're reviewed by any staff that can handle it. There were no presentations, we're still looking for ideas for presentations, of course, three presentations, because we don't have a budget. But we have a dog therapy program that is literally one page away from starting at Wunsoket High School. A parent is asked about professional development for attendants and other Gen Ed settings that provide assistive technology. Her concern is that when her child goes into a Gen Ed setting, or in one attendant setting, like art, music, gym, that those staff are not trained in how to use assistive technology, which means essentially a child is non-verbal, voiceless in their settings, and that we need to provide some sort of PD for those staff, so that all are familiar with how assistive technology works, so that this student's voice is not silenced. Dr. Sullivan advised that although she agrees with that, there's no way to mandate that sort of attendance. The parent asked if it could be worked into staff meetings, Dr. Sullivan said she tries to, the principal's got that. Announcements from the school committee, there were not a tremendous amount of announcements, we need to basically discuss mostly the situation regarding the lockdown at Wunsoket. Concerns for the chair, from the chair, we're all covered in school committee liaison comments. We extended our confidence, both staff, family, emergency here. Parents suggest that someone should be available to the parents after such an event to help depress the stress associated with the situation, and also with regard to students, because particularly specialized students are impacted by the anxiety created by such practices and lockdown, and response downs. It drives up anxiety, who would run such a thing? We were informed that while the teachers at the high school actually addressed that the next day, during advisory through a question and answer period that was led by the students, and we're all pleased to hear that, and the person that advised us of that, I believe was a teacher, I'm not really certain. And then the elementary, high school education coordinator, this one, she advised that the kids really did an incredible job, even though it's been the most difficult, because Dr. Lee was in high school the whole day. So a phone blast was not going to happen, there was a tremendous amount of issues about that on social media, that phone blast did not go out sooner. Those of meetings said, we all understood why, because one, one parent's being informed, but also one of them showing up and creating more confusion in their own school. Basically, compliments to every other high schoolers, how that is said, handled. The next CLAC meeting is Thursday, December 5th, at Wunsoket High School, in Hamlet, on 124. The meeting begins at 6:30. If you have any questions, you can contact the Chair, Marjana, at wunsoket_clac@hotmail.com. You can also contact her if you want to add an item to the agenda. I reminded that hotluck is on December 17th, and if you're coming, please facilitate your briefings so we don't end up ending up with six crazy meatballs. And our meeting was actually unusually short, we ended in Saturday.
Thank you, Mrs. Pappiscus. Anyone have any comments on the motion to receive and place on file a CLAC update? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Next, we'll go on into the technology update. Mrs. Toriani.
So you have the report for you this evening, that we do it on a monthly basis.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that better?
Yes.
A lot better. So we have this getting report that we provide on a monthly basis before I get into the statistics. Just from a data perspective, we are currently reviewing the April first snapshot report in anticipation of doing the March first snapshot report, to make sure there are no discrepancies moving forward. Aside from that, you can see there are eight data collections that we're currently working on, the RIS, some of them are done on a daily basis, some of them are done on an annual basis, but you can see by the list, the graduation cohort data, student basis, but you can see on the list, the graduation cohort data, student staff attendance, career and technical education data, summer access and referrals, discipline, teacher course to home school students, and non-certified staff. Moving on to the statistics, over the course of the last 30 days, we have approximately, closed approximately 387 work orders, we resolved 45 total, 39 are awaiting for parts, 20 are resigned out for work, 25 renewed, they're committed, 20 are in progress, and then the various states of decline, employees been put back to teacher duplicates, or waiting for a contract. Our response time has dropped, if you recall, we were at four or five days early, we dropped down to about three days. Generally, we were towards beginning terms of about two days, in terms of standard response time, but three days is the limit.
It's pretty good.
It's not that, two's generally where we're at, but keeping in mind that we will note approximately 1,600 quarters of the high school, which is in first this year, and certainly adding on some additional work and technologies. Our second statistic line of report is the customer satisfaction, rather, the third one is customer satisfaction, everything indicated in green, which means that anyone that they have responded back to our survey has indicated they were satisfied with the service of the work performed. Anything in yellow indicates that they were not satisfied, it's like a general call with an email. I'm happy to report that they were fully satisfied, or represented there in the yellow in your report, and those were all, either, two of them were because there was something that we, they asked for, that we don't do here on South End. For example, one of them was printing an iPad, and we don't allow staff to print from iPads, or students to print from iPads. And the other two were in a sense where they requested a piece of equipment that we don't purchase here. For example, we, Kami Cam, this is something that teachers use, we use what's called the Apple brand, they request us specifically to use the Apple brand, we don't purchase the Apple brand, and they were satisfied, and we give the Apple brand, and we don't give them iPads. That, all this is it?
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, for our director? I'll make a motion to resume place on file, the technology update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into new business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the appointment of the alternative program coordinator for one day for the Sockit High School. Is there a second?
Second.
Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very pleased to recommend Michelle Valencia DeLaurier for the alternative program coordinator position at Sockit High School. Ms. Valencia DeLaurier joins the Sockit Education Department with over 23 years of combined services as a dropout prevention specialist and behavior interventionist at the Sockit Education Department. During this time, she's worked diligently to motivate students, provide crisis intervention and problem solving, serving as a liaison between the special education director, building administrators, classroom teachers, and support staff. She provided case management services for students at risk of dropping out of high school due to multiple barriers. Ms. Valencia DeLaurier holds a Bachelor of Arts, degrees in sociology, is CPI certified, and a Restorative Practices Licensed Trainer for the district. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Is she here? She's not. Okay. Any questions, comments, back to you.
Chairman Porje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the resolution to modify general law to permit charging for field trips. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Essentially, this is a resolution that's piggybacking off other districts that have similar resolutions. As everyone knows, Commissioner Wagner made a decision on a question out of scratch that has put all districts in the document as to how field trips are funded. Essentially, the decision was that more students should deny the ability to participate in a field trip that needs a curriculum goal, a driving piece. In other words, if it's educationally based, we should not deny students the ability to participate simply because they do not have adequate funds to pay their way. And the ruling also put various specific guidelines on how things are fundraised. So as a result, all the districts have been asking for clarification on the commission, we have received none. Both of them all chose to pass resolutions, which were basically asking for some guidance from around the state assembly, as to how to interpret this resolution, and basically just incorporating a language that no student would deny participation in a field trip. That is something covered in the curriculum that we need to repeat. We want to clarify that that does not mean we're paying for, not the economy in particular, but entrance to Virginia, cheer leaderships to Florida, students, honored student trips to Italy, those are all different. They serve an educational purpose, they're not as a B P. And we're not going to make sure that a student can go on, because they have fundraised on the road, there's specific requirements, as to how that fundraises, and that's essentially what this resolution is about.
Okay. Any questions, thoughts on this? Doctor Lee.
Chairman Porje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
And I've got two written copies of the resolution, which I will ask all of us to sign this evening, which will make it official. Last item on our agenda is I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the increase in the Sockit Committee stipends effective for next election year. Is there a second?
Second.
Fine. We do have, and let's just look at the history of this, several years ago, before the budget commission, the school committee had a stipend of $8,000. It was then, some years later, reduced to $7,200, and when the budget commission came in, it was reduced even further to $5,000. Now, I know that every single one of us here is not here because of the stipend. It's not the money that drives the work through. However, when I take a look at the amount of work that this committee does on an ongoing basis, just from the sheer number of meetings and reports in subcommittee meetings we go to, not only the two monthly or the one monthly meetings we have, we also all attend, many of us, and sometimes it's not all of us, but we all basically take turns, that we attend a lot of activities, a lot of events throughout our school this year. And I think that's fantastic. I think it's wonderful. We get involved, we are very involved in our schools, we go to the schools, we go into the classrooms, we talk to the principals, in other words, we do the job of the school committee. And when I first was appointed, and Vice Chair Burke can speak to that too, that our subcommittees were not fully staffed. We had a couple that were staffed, some were staffed, but we still had some that were not. Today, we find ourselves, not only that all the regular subcommittees are staffed, but we've added the burning design team, and we've added a CLAC liaison, and it's wonderful that we get to do that. And if there was another project that would come up, I guess what, we would have another committee? Because we are, we are here for the children, there's no question about that. Now, in speaking to the city council president, in terms of how it would be if we so agreed in vote a stipend increase, when would it take place? Well, a same school committee cannot increase its stipends while it sits on the school committee. It only can be effective after the election is taken place. So this would be for the next elected school committee. So if none of us are elected, none of us would enjoy any recent stipend, zip. If we are elected, then lo and behold, we are the brand new sitting committee, and we would enjoy those stipends. So it is not, we are not doing this for ourselves, but I think it's important to do that, because it's an attractant. It may attract some people who would not otherwise even put their names in. And knowing us, it's not the money that makes the difference. But I think it's about time that we return the stipend to something that makes any sense. Now, we have a schedule, is it, that was in our packet, Mr. Peri, that has a financial impact on proposed increase. Right now, we're at $5,000 for the chair at $5,500. The proposal is to increase it to where we were, so we're not adding anything new to where we were years ago, from $5,000 to $8,000, and from, for the chairman, it's $5,500, the daily $5,000. That's the proposal that we have on hand. I think that covers it. So I'm sure we'll have comments.
Mr. Chairman.
I should work.
Just reading this, are we doing this increase in two steps? Is that, is that your intent here?
Mr. Chairman.
First year of growth, through...
Oh, no, 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 what? Oh, I forgot to mention.
Well, let me explain that to you.
Okay.
Perfect. The first year, because the raise is going to happen five months into the year, there will only be seven months of that increased salary. So on the first sales spreadsheet, you see the salaries going from $5,500 to $5,000 to $7,250 and $6,750. That's really a blended rate over that fiscal year of that $8,500 and $8,000, and the old rate of the $5,500 to $5,000. You're going to be running that at five months, the old rate, upon election in November, it will go up to the $8,500, but you're not going to be paying that out the whole year. So on the first one, you'll see that first raise, and on the second page, that will be the final increase, it will be from that blended rate of $7,250 for the chairman up to the $8,500. So the fiscal impact will kind of occur over two years, and it just happens, it's not really two years of raises, it's just in next fiscal year, you're going to get five months of your old rate, and then seven months of the new rate after the election.
Does that make sense to you?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. Let's, let's look at it.
The common increase, when you're talking about five months of the world rate?
But here we are. The raise goes to eight, the stipend starts, it will be at $8,000, but it begins in November, beginning in December, and we're committees. Where? The committee, okay. So if you look at that $8,000 for that fiscal year, it's nine for 12 months, the fiscal impact is from December to June. The following year is for the 12 months.
The time of the budget and the fiscal.
Yes. Right. Mr. Peri is giving it to us how it's going to look on the budget itself.
Right, so the other, the other two cents.
Anyone else?
Chairman, I would, I would just like to say that I do agree with your comments, both not really about that for this sitting committee, it isn't about money, but it is about attracting individuals, quite frequently, but it absolutely is an attractive, and thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
You know the term I used to use, and I know it's in self-appointed school committee, but elected school committees, especially this one, I consider a real school committee. They have mandated subcommittees, they do that, everybody does their job. It's one of the best school committees I've ever been on, and I can attest to it. As far as, everybody's on the same page, as far as our goals, we disagree in private of our country, but we all do our job, so I have no power to give these increases. That probably won't even affect some of us, private of our country.
It's very possible. None of us, or maybe all of us. Mrs. Kapiskas, any thoughts?
No.
Elsewhere. Anyone else? Back to you, we roll call.
Chairman Porje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
No.
Okay. Is there, and this, that's the last item. Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:25. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, adjourned.
Wow.